Okay, calling this main to order. Let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would Ms. Amy like to call a roll?
Chair Kevin Rooney.
Esther.
Here.
Vice Chair Mario Maciel Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Edwin Borcas.
Here.
Commissioner Eve Flores.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher Sines.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now open public communications. You will be able to speak for a limited three minutes. Please say your name and address first. Anyone wishing to speak can come up now.
Greg Tuttle, business owner, Baldwin Park. I'd like to talk about the cannabis. I know that you guys weren't involved in it, and I think you seriously should have been involved in it. And it was a serious oversight with the council by not involving you into the buildings that they're going to be putting the cannabis in, notifying the businesses around the area that the cannabis is going to be at, because we had no warning of any of this stuff going on. This cannabis thing has gotten out of control. And these people are coming in there with areas that aren't even qualified to be with the cannabis. But they're getting approved through the city, and they're trying to get state permits, and then they're trying to relocate. They just gave an address, because they're leasing these properties. So I just want you to be aware, I know you have no control on this, but this thing should have been handled through your department and done the proper way of notification to local businesses that are going to be putting up with these weed growers next to our businesses. And with the crime and everything else that's going to go with this, this is not going to be an easy task. And I'm very upset at the way that the council handed it, and it was only because of money. It was big money. Big donations to all the senate race people that are racing. All the council members were getting big payoffs, forty-four hundred dollars and more. This has got to stop in this city. The payoffs have got to stop. And this thing going and overseeing the planning, why do we have a planning commission if we don't even have the buildings approved that they could be used? We got weed growers that are going in there and doing the stuff and modifying the building without even city permits and city license. Now, this is illegal, but it's still being done. And yes, the code enforcement is out, doing their best. It's not stopping them. They keep building. And the thing is, what do we do? Do we take their license away? Or what are we going to do with this stuff? But this is a serious issue in our city. And you all live in this city. And you don't want to see this happen, what's going to happen, right now. Because the city was to make money on this, it's not making money when we don't get license and permits issued for all the building permits that they're doing. So we need to be aware, and we need to start talking to our council people, and we need to start notifying them that, you know, we need to make sure that this is done the legal way and not behind the door. And this thing was done from the city attorney and all this other stuff, all illegally, behind the door. City manager wasn't even involved in this.
Mr. Tuttle, your time is up.
Thank you, Amy. I knew you'd keep me on time.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Reed Patera, business owner, next to the park and ride parking lot there, I have the building next door. And my concern is that the new development that's going in there is-
We have a public hearing on that, do we not?
Yes, we do.
Yes. So if you don't mind at that time to come up when we call the agenda item?
It kind of regards the cannabis too, but that's fine. I can do that. Just a zoning thing for me.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anyone else? On any subjects that aren't on the list today?
Are not?
Yes.
Are not.
All right. I guess public communication is now closed. We have the consent calendar next.
I move to approve the minutes from the-
I'll second it.
All those in- All those four?
Aye.
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 Against? Minus approved. I abstain.
One abstention.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who abstained? Oh, thank you, Kevin.
I was in the hospital last meeting, so.
Thank you.
All right. So next we have act, set matters, public hearing.
Thank you, Chair Rooney. Let me. The next item on the agenda is AZC 188. As you're aware, and some of you have been on the commission for a while, in 2015, the code was amended to allow for electronic reader board signs, provided that certain development standards were met. However, as the commission is aware, we've modified the sign regulations a couple times recently as of a lawsuit against the city, and unfortunately, somewhere along the way, those electronic reader board development standards were inadvertently deleted by accident. We didn't realize this until we were doing research for item number three, which is the next public hearing on your staff report. So what we have done is we have taken the originally approved reader board language changes that were adopted back in 2015 and are now proposing to reincorporate them per this amendment to the zoning code AZC 188. Just briefly, those development standards include that a conditional use permit is required, may only be permitted on properties with businesses or shopping centers that encompass three acres or more. Reader boards can't face sensitive uses such as residential zones, hospitals, convalescent homes, or other sensitive land uses designated through the conditional use permit process. There are minimum duration standards for how long the message would have to stay up versus how long the transition is between two messages. There's also hours of operation, which will be determined through the conditional use permit process. Reader boards would need to be adjusted electronically, typically through sensors in the sign, to maintain contrast between the sign face and the surrounding area, meaning it would be brighter during the day in reflection to the sun, dimmer at night, you know, with the night. And then also not allowing spillover of light onto adjacent properties. So what we've done here is we've just put in the PowerPoint presentation a couple of reader board signs. This is a sample reader board for a high school. This typically will have general messages about what is going on at the site. What primarily we are looking for with the reader boards currently, right now, is for LED price signs, which you can change now electronically through LED as opposed to the little manual guy going out there and sticking the letters up like at gas station price signs, which you see here. On this side, you have a static sign, which has to be changed manually. This side, it's digital, and those numbers can be changed almost, you know, immediately as opposed to a manual sign. So at this time, staff is recommending the planning commission open the public hearing and, following the public hearing, adopt Resolution PC 18-03, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Baldwin Park recommending that the city council adopt new language in section 153.170.090(c) and table 153.170.080 in the city's municipal code relating to electronic reader boards pursuant to section 153, excuse me, .210, part 15 of the city's municipal code. The location will be commercial industrial zones, the applicant is the city of Baldwin Park, and the case number is AZC 188. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Any questions from any of the commissioners? No? Okay. Anyone wishing to make comments before we vote? All right. All those in favor of adopting it, say aye.
We need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion, sorry. Motion.
I move to approve the request.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Motion is passed. All right. Next, we have- The next one is, is it for the- Go ahead, Amy. I'll let you handle it.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience. This item before you, which is semi-related to the item you just heard, is a request for a conditional use permit for the modification of CP 404. This is, CP 404 is by Allen Company, and they are proposing to incorporate the addition of two properties located at 14634 Arrow Highway and 14635 Joan Bridge Street to their overall Allen Company recycling facility, which would modify their existing approved Exhibit A plans, and they're also looking for the addition of an electronic reader board sign at 14618 Arrow Highway. So, as you can see in table one in your staff report and right here, there are nine properties that encompass the Allen Company facility. They purchased two properties. Where did I put them? Oh, right there. They've purchased these two properties over here, and they are looking to expand and improve their buyback recyclables area, not only for vehicular circulation, but also circulation for pedestrians and employees. Currently, right now, it's all in this area. So the addition of these properties will give them more room. Staff is in favor of this proposed expansion in order to accommodate the increase in recycling that is currently being done by not only cities, but also the general public, but also we feel that the additional area will have improved safety and circulation in the public buyback area. The next item is for a electronic reader board. This is generally the type of reader board they're proposing. And they are proposing to use this primarily so that they can immediately change the price per pound they'll be accepting for various commodity materials, paper, aluminum, glass, and plastic. Like I said, this updated technology enables them to change commodity prices immediately, you know, as the market changes, as opposed to getting somebody to go out there and stick new prices up. We have reviewed this proposed reader board in accordance with the development standards that are a part of AZC 188, which you heard just prior to this. And there is a condition of approval included in here that this will not become effective until AZC 188 works its way to the city council and a decision is there. If the city council does decide not to approve the amendment to the code, the CUP for the reader board becomes null and void. If it is approved, then they will move forward with, you know, installing a reader board at their location. At this point, staff is recommending the planning commission open the public hearing and, following the public hearing, adopt Resolution PC 17-22 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving the Modification to Exhibit A of CP 404 to Include Two Adjacent Properties Into the Overall Allen Company Facility and a New Electronic Reader Board Sign Within the Industrial Commercial Zone Pursuant to Section 153.210.130(b), Table 153.170.080, and Section 153.170.090(c) of the city's municipal code. The location is 148 and 14618 and 14634 Arrow Highway and 14635 Joan Bridge Street. The applicant is our Carabouton for Allen Company and the case number is CP 404 MOD. And this concludes staff's presentation.
All right. Any questions by any of the commissioners? I have a question. The property that they're building, is that going to be used to store just recyclables?
My understanding is that there may be some storage, but it's primarily going to be used for circulation and buyback area for the public.
Okay.
Chair, is that correct? Okay.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? All right. So does any of the public have questions about this? No one? Or anything to say? All right. I guess we will have a motion to pass. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved, Resolution PC 1722.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next on the list, Amy?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience. The request before you this evening is a request for consideration of a tentative tract map to subdivide one lot into 23 attached residential condominium townhome units and one commercial condominium unit within a common lot in the MU1 mixed-use one zone of the downtown transit-oriented development specific plan pursuant to table 152.10 in the city's municipal code. The location is APN 8437-013-905. The applicant is Alex Hernandez Brandywine Homes. Case number is TM 75031. Pursuant to the Baldwin Park Downtown Transit Oriented Development Specific Plan, or the TOD specific plan, the property is zoned mixed-use one. Surrounding zones include industrial commercial to the north, east, and west, and mixed-use one and general commercial to the south. The applicant's request is for a tentative tract map to subdivide one lot into the 23 condominium townhomes, the one commercial condominium unit, and the one common lot. That is what the request is this evening, just the tentative tract map. The common lot is for, obviously, common areas that include the driveway, guest parking area, common open space. And the commercial condominium unit will be located within the existing red car building, which is proposed to be renovated. The project is designed with one access driveway to serve all garage and guest parking stalls as well as the commercial parking area. The irregular shape of the lot and the excessive street frontage that it has, as well as the existing red car building, affected pretty much the overall design of the layout for the residential component. However, the proposed design before you is efficient in that it takes advantage of every area on site. The project provides sufficient parking for both the residential and commercial components. There is also sufficient common open space for, throughout the project, for the residential uses. The subject site is currently used as a park and ride lot. The existing red car building, which is also located on site, is protected with perimeter fencing due to its state of disrepair. No known use is continued after Pacific Electric shut down the substation. The project will incorporate three different three-story floor plans with floor areas ranging from 1,252 to 1,740 square feet. Each dwelling unit will have between two and four bedrooms and between 2.5 and 3.5 bathrooms. Building design and architecture include an earth-toned color palette with Spanish or Spanish-Mediterranean-style elements. Features include a combination of arched entries and openings, decorative metal railings, window shutters, gable accents, and S-tile roofing. The existing Pacific Electric red car building is proposed to be renovated. The exterior red brick will remain. However, according to the provided floor plans and elevations, the renovation will include installation of glazing, such as windows and doors, on the openings that are existing. The floor plan will include a new bathroom area and a storage room. The city's design review committee has tentatively approved the project's design pending planning commission approval of the tentative tract map. As the planning commission is aware, conditions of approval are included in the staff report and resolution. The commission should note that condition 17 of the staff report, or condition Q of the resolution, was modified after the staff report was reproduced and published. The condition was changed to be consistent with state law and the timeframes of the subdivision map act. Revised draft resolution was provided in front of you. You should have it there. Also, engineering conditions were modified as well after publishing, so you have those as well. That's Engineering Public Works Conditions of Approval. Staff has reviewed the application and has determined that the project meets the requirements of the downtown TOD specific plan and is in accordance with the goals and policies of the general plan. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission open public hearing and, following public hearing, adopt Resolution PC 18-04 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Approving a Tentative Tract Map to Subdivide One Lot Into Twenty Three Attached Residential Condominium Townhome Units and One Commercial Condominium Unit Within One Common Lot in the Mixed Use One Zone of the Downtown Transit-Oriented Development Specific Plan pursuant to table 152.10 of the city's municipal code. Location is APN 8437-013-905. Applicant Alex Hernandez Brandywine Homes. Case number is TM 75031. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from any of the commissioners? I have a question. How many, how many parking spots are there for the townhomes for people that don't live there?
There are six, for the, for the townhomes is separate, there are six stalls for the for the commercial component. But there are also required guest parking, and they meet those requirements.
Well, the only problem I have is you have three and four-bedroom houses or condos, And a lot of those will have more than two cars, and I know townhouses have two-car garages.
Each of the units will have two-car garages, and those units that have three bedrooms or more will have three spaces total.
Three spaces?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, because traffic is just nuts right around Beddello, right here in Ramona. So, wow, six. Well, there's only 23 units total, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just have a problem, because I'm still steaming about the ones on Pacific. Forty-eight units, and they only had, I think, 15 spots they came out with. Because they shortened the other spots, smaller, I mean, that's just ridiculous to me.
One thing to keep in mind about this project is that it is within the Transit-Oriented Development Specific Plan, which is transit-oriented. So, you know, it's supposed to take advantage of the fact that it's within proximity of the MetroLink station.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. Excuse me. One of the things I didn't see in the staff report is there was an actual traffic mitigation report done on this. Was there a study done?
The project falls within the parameters of the Downtown Transit-Oriented Development Specific Plan, which had an environmental impact report that covered all traffic, air quality, everything that's related. So because this project meets the specific plan development standards, it's basically piggybacking off of the environmental impact report, which addressed that.
My biggest concern is that, I know we have just recently approved the project for the ovation, building to be destroyed and condominiums to be put in there, which is literally down the street. And not only that, a little bit further down from there, we also have another set of condominiums being put in by Craig Cook, also in the same vicinity.
Right.
My concern is that there's definitely going to be an impact in traffic. We're talking about Ramona and Beddello being the heart boulevard for Baldwin Park, for people to transit through to get to Azusa, to get to West Covina. And that's a major concern for me. So, in the plans that I looked at, I do see that there's only one driveway into this particular plan, which is on the south side on Beddello. From what I saw, there's an island in the middle of Beddello that would prohibit people from making a left. Am I right or wrong?
That's correct.
Which means people would have to go all the way down to Puente, do a U-turn, and come back to enter their facility?
Right.
Yes?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Doesn't make any sense to me to create homes in an area where it's not going to be accommodating to the people living there. And then back on what Rooney was saying, three and four-bedroom houses, I think they're required to have four stalls per unit. So two-car garage and a two-car port. Two-car carport is what I would require of it. My next concern is, if I recall correctly, on, touching back on the cannabis areas that were selected, doesn't this particular project fall within that map area that was selected for cannabis cultivation and distribution?
No, this is zoned mixed-use one. I don't, I'm not sure if I understand your question. The cannabis ordinance allows those uses in the industrial and industrial-commercial zones. So this is a separate type of zone. It is neighboring industrial-commercial zones.
Right.
But are there any applications for cannabis?
There are certain development standards in the cannabis ordinance. For example, you can't be adjacent to a residential zone, so the property right next door to this, which I think is the property that Mr. Patera owns, would not be able to have cannabis because it is right next door to the mixed-use zone. So it meets all the development standards.
Okay.
All right. Any more questions? Would anybody like to speak in the public?
Ken Reed Patera, business owner. Yeah, I own the property next door, and my concern is that I'm pretty much going to sit in a dead zone. I don't really have a home now. It's going to be, can't grow cannabis, so there goes my value for my property if I want to rent it. I don't know what the city's going to allow me to put in there. If I do rent it, I've been there for 35 years as a contractor, storage, and cabinet shop. And I do have plans of retiring shortly, so the cannabis thing would be a good move for me, so I could actually get someone in there that could pay some rent. I guess that's about all I have to say. I just hopefully that maybe it can be a variance or something like that. There's only one section, about one house, that's really kind of inhibiting me from getting that, the mixed-use zone where the red car building is, seems to me like that's not really a residential zone, although you have it approved that way. It seems like it should be more of a commercial zone instead of a residential. But I don't know. And there's only one house and one condominium that's up against that property line. And that way, if they get rid of that or give a variance on that, so then it could be used for cannabis, it would make it, well, obviously, more profitable for me and a better way to go, is what I'm concerned, so. All I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. I'm going to clarify, clear up the confusion with the cannabis stuff. We have one that's going to be straight across the street from it. It'll be at the smog shop and at Royal Coach's Little House. There's also the barber shop that's going to be taken away because the cannabis place is coming in there. It's right next door to this stuff. This can't happen here. These people have bullied their way into this city over two years ago. Walburn came in here with representing Brandywine. It's been shoved down our throat with this project. It started with numerous ones. They've done numerous conceptions. And this thing here, as we all know, Beddello and Ramona have no parking during the day between the bus park- Between the bus parking, all the businesses, everybody's on the street. One exit out of those apartments, ridiculous. When the train comes, how long are these people going to wait? Morning traffic is backed up to the school, where the school intersection is. These people want to shove a housing project in here because they paid off Ricardo Pacheco. This stuff here, you've got hundred-year-old trees standing there that the city's supposed to be protecting. They're cutting those down. The other thing is, is with the building here, I have almost everybody on Ramona and Beddilo signature sign, they do not want this project. Did these guys do outreach? Absolutely not. They bullied their way in here because they paid off the right people to get in here. They didn't do any of the research that they're supposed to do and see if the, if the community is happy with this project, not just the council that gets money. So, I have the petition signed that we had dated way back, that people, people want to see that this is not going to happen in their area. This was supposed to be a project that was going to be a commercial, like commercial, maybe a restaurant and that type of stuff. But when you stick houses in there, this is a commercial zone. It's always been a commercial zone since I've been there in nineteen eighty. Now, all of a sudden, we're going to put housing in there? Now, we already had to do code enforcing on the street over on Beddilo where the woods are at, because all the people across the street in the, in apartments park all over the street. People can't even park in front of their own houses. Now, we're going to, how are we going to park our cars? We have cars parked there for the, for the transit. Now, everybody says it's transit-approved. Who's going to take the transit? Have they got written signatures from the people who are going to buy these condos? That they're going to take the transit, and they're not going to have a car? We've already figured it out. It's two and a half cars per family.
Mr. Tuttle, your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. I will now close public communications for it.
I'm chairman. I just have something to say that the city council has entered into a DDA, a Development Disposition Agreement, with Walburn to bring these units to the city. If you decide not to do this, this will go to the city council on appeal, because the city council has already approved the project in, in terms of a business deal. But the specific zoning and the tentative tract map, et cetera, is up to you to decide. But I just wanted to let you know that the city council has already approved this project and that if you decide not to go with it or to modify it significantly, that it will be appealed to the city council, and they will have the final say. Is that clear?
So, if I am understanding correctly, that means that this particular vote is already redundant?
No, you could modify it if you wish. I'm just telling you that it will go to the city council again. It, unlike other projects where you will deny it, and it's up to the applicant to appeal it, this will automatically go to the city council without, without that appeal.
Just for the record, one of the things that I also wanted to address is the fact that I do have a friend that lives on Lozano Way, and it caught my attention that I went to get some feedback from this particular person, who said they were going to be here for me tonight, but they didn't make it. Anyhow, they never did receive notification of this particular proposal, and I wanted to know if, if there is a list of people that actually were notified.
We do have a list or copy of all the persons that were notified. In fact, there is a notification error. There's two notices that went out. The first one was an error because it was a copy and paste error. But the second one, we corrected. So, if within the three-hundred-foot radius, they should have received those there. We do have...
I thought it was five-hundred. Now, it's three-hundred?
That's what it is. Five-hundred is, the five-hundred is if you live within five-hundred district, five-hundred feet, then there's a presumed conflict and you can't participate in the vote. The three-hundred feet is what the, what we noticed them with, with this letter that the planner discussed. And that, that mailer is sent out within three-hundred square feet of, of, of the project.
Yeah, I, I guess I suppose if I can add something. So, I guess whether we approve it or not, it's, it's all going to the city council as any other thing can be appealed to the city council. But if we were to say, can we table this for the next meeting and have a greater discussion with, you know, our community and city council? Because it seems a lot of people have a lot of things to say. And so, I don't know, maybe tabling it until the next meeting, we can get some more clarity and kind of holistic understanding.
If, if you do that, then I would recommend that you ask staff specifically what it is you want brought back at the next meeting. If it's a parking issue, ask them to brief it for you. If it's, if it's, well, it sounds like it's parking issues.
Well, it's the parking and the driveways. It's like, why wouldn't there be a driveway on the opposite end? You have buses, you got the foothill transit, you have Royal Coaches driving up and down Ramona. And, and for there to be only one driveway, that just, it sounds, it sounds bad enough.
I would just like to say, in November of two thousand seventeen, I was hit twice in my car in this area. Not the specific area that's at. But I know Ramona is very, very congested, and I feel there would be safety concerns.
It's, it's a safety concern for the high school, too, because you got students coming up and down Beddilo. And that's the biggest concern of mine, that twenty-three homes in this area is not the right adequate place for it. I'm sorry. Not in this particular avenue or boulevard for that, say. Anyhow.
I have a question. Edith, would this be like a fire hazard if they don't have two driveways at least?
Actually, been completely vetted and approved by the fire department. We do not bring you tentative parcel maps or tract maps that are not cleared by the fire department first.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add, a second driveway was considered early on in the design stages, you know, when this was brought, originally brought up to the city. If I recall, there was discussion that having any other driveways on the north side or on this side up here, too close to the intersection is dangerous. Up here creates a situation where motorists will adapt and learn to shortcut that. And that would create an issue that they'll just want to pass through and bypass this turn. So, that creates a bit of a circulation issue on site and a hazard, pretty much.
I had one more question for staff. As far as the utility agencies that were notified, I wanted to get a clear understanding. The ones that didn't respond, do we not wait for them? Or we just go without their saying?
We, we have a catch-all condition of approval that states that the applicant shall comply with all requirements from all the utility companies when that time comes. Because it's true, not all utility companies respond. But we do, however, wait for a fire department to clear this, like Amy stated. And we also have our own engineering and public works division respond to us for, for circulation or traffic issues. So, you know, fire and, and our own engineering, we do wait.
Typically, too, we give them, what, two to three weeks to respond? Most of the time, fire takes longer than that. So, even if we get a response letter from a utility company after our, hey, we'd like your comment by this date, we still include it, so.
So, this is not going to be a gated community, right?
It cannot be, because it's a shared driveway. It shares the, the common driveway. It's shared with the commercial location. The commercial location and persons that are patrons that are wanting to visit the commercial retail or whatever goes in there, have to get into that same driveway and make probably the first right into that parking area. So, placement of a driveway would be really difficult, especially because of the, the shape and layout of the design.
And is it in your driveway, sir? Yes, so it's shared with his business? Okay. So, you were going to make a, is there a motion to table it?
Oh, well, I have nothing specific for them to bring back.
Yes or no question? All right. Well, there's no motions to. Are we going to table this, or do we need a motion?
Again, that's up to the, up to the commission to do a motion in a second to continue it to the next regular meeting with specific questions about parking and the driveway.
And safety.
And, and community, community outreach, because I don't think it was clearly done.
Okay.
And the cannabis right next door.
Yes, sir?
Yeah. Did you, if you didn't close the public hearing, Alex Hernandez with Brandywine is here.
Well, chair and members of the commission, Alex Hernandez of Brandywine Homes. And I think procedurally, I think you did close the hearing. So, if you wouldn't mind reopening it, I would like to...
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Alex Hernandez, president of Brandywine Homes, representing the development team in this project, to address some of the issues that were raised here tonight. So, I want to kind of walk you through some of the items. We have been pursuing this property probably close to a year. We did do a couple hearings. We were looking at this site, as well as the site in the downtown. These are city-owned properties. We're under contract to buy them from the city. So, we went through numerous rounds of evaluating site plans to determine what would be viable, what would meet all the city's standards, and then calculated a land price that would be acceptable to the city, which the city council adopted in a specific development agreement and a DDA, and the site plan was attached to that DDA. So, at those hearings, there were numerous people at those hearings. We decided not to pursue the, the project in the downtown. We didn't think that was feasible to, to proceed. This site, however, we went through numerous iterations, as the staff mentioned. This is not our first site plan. We went through numerous site plans, looked at different layouts, and we fully complied with your specific plan. That specific plan was adopted by this planning commission and by the city council. So, this is fully complying with your land use standards that you put in place for this site. Parking, open space, density, mixed use, all of those standards were, were in full compliance. There are no variances whatsoever being requested. With regards to circulation, yes, there was a look in, look at, to see if we could pursue an access point at that on the north end. And actually, it was city manager and some of the council members that were concerned that people would just use this as a cut-through to cut through the, the community and cut, and go the other way. So, we've, we've been through numerous revisions on this plan, working with staff, making sure we fully complied with all the standards. With regards to assessments and the utilities, et cetera, we have will-serv letters from all the dry utilities, be it Edison, Sewer Water, you name it. All the, all the agencies have been looked at. During due diligence, we, we don't go forward with the project if we don't know it's going to be feasible to, to be provided services for the homeowners. So, all that capacity, we've already addressed. We've done soil testing, environmental testing, you name it. We've done acoustical for the, the noise coming from the, the train. These homes will be designed with special windows on the second and third floors to provide, to meet the, to provide, meet your code for inside noise landscaping. Maybe go to the common colored site plan. Some of that wasn't really illustrated for you.
This is the site plan we have on, on the presentation.
You don't have a colored version of it?
Not on the PowerPoint.
It's kind of hard to see here, but maybe some of the things to accent for you that it's really kind of hard to see in a black and white. I did see they had a colored one back there. But when we submitted this to design review committee, in addition to the homes, there's some active areas. In the corner on Beddilo in that area, there's a trellis picnic area, you know, barbecues for the residents who live here. As you come, we're also accommodating two existing bus stops that are there. Those will remain and still be accessible to the residents. The commercial, that was a request from the staff and the city to, hey, can you save that red car? It's not historical. We could have just taken that out. But we, we, the city put a request to us to try to restore that. We have now, we have budgeted to re-engineer that building and restore it and bring it back to some kind of commercial life. We have open space behind that area as well, where there'll be some additional picnic areas and seats. And anybody who potentially goes into that retail could activate that little open space area to the side. Maybe have a couple little tables out there, et cetera. We will be putting a brand-new block wall between us and the neighbor's property, as well as pileasters, wrought iron. You saw the architecture kind of more of a Spanish flavor. These aren't boxes. You have undulation happening on all levels. You have accent materials. Brick is included in some of these buildings. Parking, every house has a two-car garage. In addition to that, yes, there's six dedicated for the retail. But you can see the open space parking that's in there as well. And then, the units that have that little shaded pattern that happens there, those actually have full driveways. So, those units there, in addition to their two-car garage, have full driveways, premium to those, those people who live there. So, we fully comply with the code. Actually, with those driveways, we exceed the parking requirements that are established by the city.
Alex, let's wrap it up.
Okay. So, I just wanted to, I just wanted to point out, I know those are more design issues, but, you know, we have been working with staff. We have gone through a couple hearings at council. We've been, I actually met the neighbor next door. I walked, I walked into his shop. So, that's when I didn't reach out to him. We walked, we walked through his shop. There has been some outreach. So, I just wanted to address some of those issues. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
All right. Public hearings closed. We will, is there a motion to pass? Opposed to it?
Aye.
I, I would recommend that, since you have to have specific findings for denial, that you give direction to staff one way or the other, which way you want to go. And we would bring back that resolution at the next meeting.
Explain that to me again.
In order to pass or, or deny a project, you have to have the findings of fact. And those are the findings of fact in your staff report that have existing property, existing zoning, compatibility of community, traffic and safety. And if, if what you are saying is that you believe this project should be denied, then we need to revise that resolution and bring it back at the next meeting.
My thing is, nothing wrong with, with the project, with, with the exception of, there is a traffic issue for me. There is a safety for kids. Why can't we put this project in front of the city hall? That's a perfect area for it. But not here, not, not this area. This, this is not what I want to see when I'm driving down Beddilo. I'm sorry. That's not what I want to see. It is, it is an issue, a, a safety issue. And that, that's the only reason for my denial.
Then, you would have a motion, therefore, to deny tentatively, because we have to bring back the findings of fact at the next meeting. In other words, we have to rewrite the resolution, because the resolution is written in the positive. Meaning, if you adopt this resolution, you approve the project. If you make a motion to deny it, then we need to rewrite the resolution and bring it back at the next meeting. So, it... Do you have a, a motion to deny? Is that your motion?
My motion's to deny.
Okay. Then, I would recommend a denial with tentative denial when we bring back the rewritten resolution at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
And Amy, real quick, this, this was, this, the, the city hall, that other location, that was already checked into research, and it, it was, it was agreed that this was a better location than, than the near city hall downtown?
It is my understanding that the developer looked at this location and the other location concurrently. Excuse me. Excuse me. The location across from City Hall did not work out for a variety of reasons, from what I understand. So they dropped that. They did not renew the exclusive negotiation agreement, I believe, for that site. They did renew it and did continue looking at this site, and this is what has been proposed and been vetted.
Thank you.
I, I find it hard to deny it, because I, I do think that, that area needs something, and it's kind of like, like vacant, it's kind of hard to see that red building, just a bunch of junk around it. So like, I can't find it in me to deny it. So I would like to table it, or a motion to table, to continue to look into perhaps traffic mitigation opportunities before take the decision to approve.
And I would second that.
Okay, so your motion is off the table, his motion is now?
Yes.
To table it?
To the next planning commission meeting, which would be on what date? And with staff to look into safety issues?
Yes.
Traffic issues?
Yes.
The, the one lane entrance?
Yes.
Any other issue you do you want brought back?
And the parking.
I would, I would like to see more parking, if that's possible. Because the residents, I'm sure if they, if they went a little farther out with the residents in that neighborhood, because that affects more than just 300 feet.
But he did mention that there's, there's a two-car garage, and then there's a driveway for additional, he says he exceeds the parking requirement, so that might be one thing we don't need to-
For four units.
There's absolutely no parking on the street, as far as that particular area. No parking. So which means that the business owner is saying that his place is always, there's only two spaces.
Okay, so we want to include parking as well, and, and on top of the other three issues?
That's what my concern would be, along with safety, so.
Okay, so the motion would be to continue to the next regular meeting with the issues just addressed, brought back for, is that enough information for you?
Okay, so the issues that I have are safety, traffic, the one entrance, and more parking on site?
Yes.
Anything else?
Well, no, for safety, wouldn't it be a good idea to have a stoplight where they enter into there, to help them from getting hit? Because I know when you slow on that street, the other cars are coming right up on you.
I wanted, I wanted to get to your understanding if the people going eastbound on Badiyo will be able to turn after that island into that driveway. Is that something that they're looking at, or is just completely off the chart, and then they have to go all the way down to make a U-turn?
We can look, we can include that.
And just a traffic mitigation, because I know we have those other two projects going on right down the street, and that, that's a concern. We're gonna have three projects going on at the same time. That's definitely gonna cause some traffic.
Okay, so there's a motion to table it till February 28th, when we get all the feedback?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Now a second. There's a second already?
There a second?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Chris.
Okay, second?
Ari.
Thank you.
Next item. Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience, the request, this, this is a request for consideration of a modification to Exhibit A of CP 827 mod 1 for changes to the site plan and a revised tentative track map to subdivide proposed building into 10 individual warehouse condominium units and one common lot with, within the I industrial zone pursuant to Section 153.210.130.C and 152.10 in the city's municipal code. The location is 5119 Azusa Canyon Road, units A through J. The applicant is Chalmers Corporation, DBA CEG Construction. Case number is CP 827 mod 2, and TM 748-54 revised track map. The property is zoned in I industrial and is surrounded by both industrial commercial and industrial zone lots to the north and west, as well as industrial type uses in the city of Verwindale to the east. The lot is also adjacent to residential R1 single-family zone lots that are located to the south. And if you may recall, this project, on September 29th, 2015, the city's design review committee approved the design review for, for the design for a 97,000 square foot, 97,945 square foot warehouse building. However, the proposed warehouse use required planning commission approval of the conditional use permit. The applicant obtained planning commission approval of CP 827 on January 27, 2016. Then on, on July 12, 2017, you may recall, the planning commission approved a request for a tentative track map to subdivide the one lot into 10 units within one common lot for condominium purposes. The, the planning commission also concurrently approved a request for modification of the existing warehouse CUP. The, this was, that was the first modification. In, in essence, the first modification requested to include each unit to be a part of a blanket CUP, if you will, and also to rotate the building 180 degrees so that the truck docks are to the north, and also to eliminate a condition that allowed the city to impose additional conditions to minimize noise if three confirmed complaints were received from residents within six-month period. Now, this request before you is essentially to return the building to its original orientation with truck docks to the south. As a result of this, the tentative track map was also revised, it also is before you this evening. And the condition of approval relating to noise that was originally removed as part of the first modification request has been added back into the resolution, since the original justification to remove it is no longer valid, in that the truck docks are facing south towards residential. If you recall, the site is originally, the, the site originally operated with industrial manufacturing uses that have ceased. All buildings are proposed to be demolished for the construction of the new warehouse condominium project. The proposed building and site design remains generally the same. It's just a rotation back to the original design, as originally approved by the planning commission. Sufficient parking is provided for the proposed warehouse areas and the office area. Staff has determined that the project with the added conditions of approval is compatible with surrounding industrial areas and will not be detrimental to the adjacent residential areas. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission open public hearing, and following public hearing, adopt Resolution PC 18-02 entitled "The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Ballton Park Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving Conditional Use Permit Modification," mod number 2, to CP 827, and a revised tentative track map for condominium purposes to subdivide one lot into 10 units with, and a common lot for a proposed 97,945 square foot building within the I industrial zone pursuant to Table 153.050.020 and Section 152.10 in the city's municipal code. The location, 5119 Azusa Canyon Road, applicant Chalmers Corporation, DBA CEG Construction. Case number is CP 827 mod number 2, and TM 748, 748-54. This concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners? I would like to open this up to public hearing for anyone wishing to speak for or against.
Good evening, Commissioners. Want to thank you for your time and consideration, and I especially want to thank Abraham and Amy for all your work. CEG Construction has been in business now for 24 years. I've joined Trace Chalmers, the owner. 16 years ago, I was a building official for the city of Vernon for 20 years. I left before everything got very ugly over there. Our specialty is designing and building industrial buildings. We build an extremely quality building with Amy and Abraham's help to make sure the building will be attractive. I think you'll be very impressed, and I just want to say thank you very much. We have enjoyed working with the city thus far, and we look forward to very successful completion of this project. Thank you.
So would you please restate your name from the record?
Thank you. Richard Lucas, I am Vice President of Construction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come up at this time? All right, seeing none, public communications is closed. Is there a motion to pass?
A motion to pass, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, it's have it.
And I look forward to getting invitation for the grand opening. Once it's done.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I look forward to getting that invitation of the grand opening once it's done.
Gotcha. And this will be the first, we have another one proposed. And we look forward to it. And pleasure working with people. Civil service.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you very much.
All right. This next item. Honorable Chair, a request for consideration of the following. One, a tentative parcel map to combine two lots into one lot. Two, a design exception to facilitate the construction of a 52-foot-tall mono-eucalyptus wireless communication facility in a residential zone. And three, a conditional use permit for a wireless communications facility within the R1 single-family residential zone pursuant to Tables 152.10 and Table 153.180.050 in the city's municipal code. The location is APN 8460-001-900 and 8460-001-901. Applicant is Verizon Wireless, Reliant Land Services, care of Stella Shee, and the case number is PM 1437 and CP 856. The property is located on the north side of Big Dalton Avenue, just east of Channing Street. The property is zoned R1, stated, a single-family residential, and is surrounded by other residential zone properties to the south, east, and west. And the area just north of, of this site is, and adjacent is the Big Dalton Wash flood control channel. The property is owned by Valley County Water District, who will continue to use the property for their operations. In order to construct the proposed wireless facility, the property owner is required to combine the two parcels, a tentative tract, a tentative parcel map, I should say, and application to combine the two parcels has been submitted for your consideration this evening. And the reason is because the equipment enclosure and mono-eucalyptus tree or pole is proposed on the back parcel, while the meter and power source for the property is in the middle parcel. Note that the front parcel is a residence that is not a part of this request. This is an aerial photo showing the subject, outlining the, the subject property. And again, what I was stating is that the tower will go in the back, and the power supply will be drawn through a power line underground to the, from, from the, from the middle parcel here. Again, this is residence here, it's not a part of this project. And this is actually showing that, what I just stated, the site plan. This is the enclosure with a six-foot block wall, decorative block wall enclosure, and the tower within it. And here is the meter and pedestal and the source with the line going to it. That's the reason why they need this parcel map. And let's see. The proposed mono-eucalyptus, eucalyptus will hold 12 panel antennas on three sectors, that's four antennas per sector. The equipment enclosure will house two equipment cabinets and one permanent standby generator that runs on diesel fuel. Pursuant to Table 153.180.050, the wireless code, wireless communications facilities are prohibited in the residential zones unless an exception is granted, which is being requested tonight. Since the subject wireless facility is proposed in the, in the R1 zone, the applicant is requesting that exception be granted in addition to the conditional use permit to allow the use in the zone. Table 153.180.050 also limits the height of any antenna structure to a maximum of 30 feet, unless the exception is granted for that. The mono, the, the mono-eucalyptus is proposed to be 52 feet in height, and the applicant has demonstrated that the height is required at this location, and is therefore requesting an exception to exceed the 30-foot height limit. Staff has reviewed the application and the application materials, including justification statements and the engineering analysis, and has determined that with the added conditions of approval, the proposed wireless facility will not have an adverse impact on the environment or public welfare. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission open public hearing, and following public hearing, adopt Resolution PC 18-05 entitled "The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Ballton Park Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving a Tentative Parcel Map Consolidating Two Lots into One, a Design Exception and Conditional Use Permit to Construct a 52-foot-tall mono-eucalyptus wireless communications facility within the R1 single-family residential zone pursuant to Tables 152.10 and 153.180.050 and Section 153.180.100 in the city's municipal code. Location is APN 8460-001-900 and 8460-001-901. The applicant Verizon Wireless, Reliant Land Services, care of Stella Shee, and case numbers PM 1437 and CP 856. This concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you. Just a quick correction, you said on Section 153.180.040, you said 050. So I don't want to get any confused on the recorder or whatever it is you guys use.
The, the resolution title is 05, 153.180.050.
Okay.
It is 050.
I thought I had 140 here. All right, I'll change it. All right, thank you very much. Any questions by the Commissioners?
I have a question. Could you guys educate me as to why it is that it's, the tower is actually frowned upon in the residential area?
You know, that's what the municipal code has, the wireless section of the code.
What dangers does it have? If there's any.
There, there's no dangers or anything that are submitted, that are actually listed in the municipal code. As far as I can remember, we've never permitted wireless communication facilities within residential zones. We have to go through this process of an exception, which sort of is like a variance, but it's its own little process. As to the reasoning why, I don't recall from way back in the day. It was something that was actually in the code prior to me coming on board here.
Now, no radiation or anything like that coming off these towers, right?
No, not that, you know, nothing like that is mentioned in the code.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any more questions? Seeing none, open-
Actually, I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to get a clear understanding, why wouldn't they create an actual power unit right next to the tower that would accommodate its power source?
A, a power unit? There is a backup generator, is that what you're referring to?
No, 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 no. What you're saying, when you explained to us-
Oh, I was just showing the reason why the parcel map is needed, is because the power supply that's, you know, the, the meter pedestal and all that is on one parcel where, where the parcel is energized, while the tower, that parcel is not energized. So they're running that, that line of power to that, and because of that, we want this to be a one consolidated lot.
If I recall correctly, that's where the meter is on the property. The back property didn't have a meter, so they wanted to use the existing meter, but building code and such doesn't allow for construction or utilities and stuff to go over property lines, which is why we have the variance combining the two.
There you go.
Or not the variance, parcel map, sorry.
That explains it. Thank you. That explains it. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? Okay, open to public. Anyone wishing to speak? You have three minutes. Please say your name and address.
My name's Diana Alvarez. I live at 3650 Stichman. So I back that. So on the other side of the wash, my house is there. My concern is lack of privacy when they come to work on this, noise, EMF. Also, my question would be, do the notices go out in two languages? Because it's only in English, and I know a lot of people on our street only speak Spanish. And I'm not seeing people here, which I know they would be here. So I'm concerned that they didn't get notification. And the other thing is proximity to those Beinlin Elementary School, which would be just on the other side of those homes. Let alone myself.
Okay.
But again, loss of privacy, people working up on those poles, they're looking in the And I don't want to get sick. Thank you.
Okay. Would you be able to answer any of those questions for Amy about the issues she's having?
In regards to privacy, the tower is going to remain, well, mostly unmanned unless, until, you know, when it's constructed, they'll obviously be going up to install the antennas and occasional maintenance. But generally, these facilities are not person, there's no person there. And the applicant is available to answer any questions as well, but my understanding is that these are typically unmanned.
Okay. We'll get back to you as soon as Mr. Tuttle speaks.
Well, he can go. She can go. Finish. Finish. What you want to say?
My concern is, where I've read about these, the privacy issue, if something needs to be repaired, they're going to be up in that tree. What is their limit to when they can work on it? Also, the sound reverberates in the wash, so I get already a lot of noise from that area. And you're talking a diesel generator, that's going to make a lot of sound in there. Because it just, it bangs off the walls.
Okay, I'll try and find out about that first. Mr. Tuttle?
Amy, maybe you can answer this. We got a flyer into the businesses over in my area there about that cell tower. And I don't understand, that was his mess up? Okay.
Yes.
Anyway.
Yeah, yeah. If you recall, in the last item, I mentioned that there were two notices that were sent, and this is a copy and paste error. We don't like to reinvent the wheel. It takes too much time. So it was a copy and paste error, and the description for this project ended up on the Brandywine, but so we had to send out the Brandywine project out again, which is why Mr. Tuttle received wireless information.
Okay.
Okay. I'm really confused on why they got to put it in residential. It's beyond me that you can't put it in something in the commercial. I mean, we have so much area that this could be in, that why are you putting it in residential? And then on top of that, extending it another 20 feet. I think they could pick another spot. Because just like the lady over here says and everything, now, and a diesel generator, they need to step up to LP gas or whatever and be friendly with the air, okay? Diesel generators are not friendly with the air unless they're going to be compliant with catalytic converters and everything else, which is very costly. I know they probably won't have too many power outages, but if it does happen, these are, these are old-style generators. They need to be updated and make sure that they work off of the LP gas, something that's friendly with our air. But I seriously think that they should be looking in a commercial area to where you can, that people don't care over in the commercial areas where we're growing weed and all the other stuff. And nobody has an issue with the generator or a noise issue, and privacy. So, and 20 feet higher, that's, that's a lot. So I think that they ought to pick another spot. And maybe you guys can help them find another spot. But what they're doing there in a residential area, I would be highly upset if my house was next to this. Thank you very much.
All right. Are there anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Commissioner, and my name is Stella Sheeh, and I'm the applicant for this project representing Verizon. If I may, I would like to address a few questions or concerns. We picked this site in a residential area because that there's an actual capacity need that is identified by the RF engineer. And so we went to the initial, actually, the initial search is on the more of a mixed-use area. However, that we couldn't find a viable candidate. And we were looking at the initial search ring. I don't know if you have my application. This page shows the initial search ring and also the properties we have looked at. And unfortunately, we couldn't find anybody who would work with Verizon to locate a site. And that's why the proposed location is over here. And because the initial search was unsuccessful, so the RF engineer had enlarged the search ring. And that's why this location was chosen. And also because the water district was willing to work with Verizon. That's why one of the major obstacle is that you find a interested landlord. And so that's the reason why this, this spot is picked. And as for the height of the antennas, that's decided by the RF engineer as well. And so he wants to, the antenna has to overshoot surrounding area. And I think with this one, that we have two-story tall residential developments around us, so the antennas have to be over that. And so the bottom of the antenna, I believe, is at 38 feet. And the, we, we picked the tree to have the 50-feet-tall tree, also give some area for the, some feet at the top for crown, so that would make the tree more natural looking. So is that of, you just see the top of the antenna and the tree is cut off, so we would like to have a little bit of room. So the tree branches will taper to the, to the top. And as for the generator, the generator we're using is AQMD-approved, and also is an emergency backup generator. And it comes on when there is a power outage. And so basically, we're going, only going to run the generator, testing like maybe 15 minutes every few days to make sure that this runs. And as for the privacy issue, yes, we would have to, after the initial installation, that from time to time, if there's a need, and technicians will have to go up to the tree to maybe service the antennas or change out equipments. But that's, I mean, every, you know, power poles, you have to have people go up if there is any problem. So I really can't, we, this one, I don't know how, how to address, except that Abraham says also suggested we can plant some trees. We can plant trees at the back that maybe can block our view of the tree a little bit more. So the other thing is, and also Verizon operates the facility in full compliance with FCC's requirements and regulations. And their FCC's regulations is very strict. So Amy concerns that, I'm not an expert, but from what I, I learned throughout my career with Verizon, and the cell towers, actually, I have an illustration of what FCC's requirements and compares in, to the cell towers.
Okay, Stella, you need to wrap it up.
Oh, sorry. This is a typical 700 megahertz frequency FCC-allowed power. And this, this one is a baby monitor. And we are at 40-feet cell tower at the bottom when you're, you're at the bottom of, on ground compared to a 40-feet monopole. So it's basically compared to a baby monitor when you are only three feet away from the baby monitor. So I guess, as I have, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a question. Typically, how long does it take to put up a tower, a cell tower? And also, if there's any repairs and after you put it up, how long do they take to repair?
To build a cell tower is, takes about two months. And it also includes, what we have to do, foundation work, trenching work. So to put up the tower, I'm not 100% positive, but I think it's within a week or, or a week and a half that the tower will be up. For maintenance work, it really depends on what kind of maintenance. If they're just go up to change out the antennas to a new model or add additional radio equipment at the back, it's just a day.
I have a question for you. Would it be possible for you to notify the residents around that area when you guys will be doing maintenance? Is that possible?
Uh...
That way, if they have a security issue or privacy issue, a notice to me saying, hey, we're going to be there around 10 o'clock to 12 noon, that would at least let me know, hey, you know they're going to be there.
Do you get notice when power company need to do something on the power?
Yes. Edison does provide.
Okay. All right. And I'll bring that to Verizon.
Okay. My next question to you would be on this generator that it's going to be using diesel fuel. You said it has been approved by AQMD?
Yes.
Yes, so?
All the, all the generator used by Verizon is approved by AQMD.
So do these generators have DPF system in it?
I don't know what kind, I don't know what kind of system they have. I just know that generators are approved by AQMD.
Is there a way to find out if these do have the DPF system installed on them? I mean, because there is a state-mandated law that vehicles have to have the DPF system and the death?
I'm not familiar with DPF systems.
D is a particulate filter.
I, if it's AQMD-approved, that's, that's all we got. It is a stationary one, so.
I'm just curious to know if it's actually, if it's approved, if it does have that already installed.
I'm not yet. I don't know.
What you can do, if you desire, with the commission is we can formulate, if you're looking to approve this, we can formulate a condition to add to the resolution, if you'd like.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak?
Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to pass?
I'm sorry, the public hearing is over. So, and you're not allowed to speak unless you come up to the podium and speak.
Our notices go out in English. However, there is a Spanish section at the bottom that says if you have, you know, it says something to the effect of if you have questions in Spanish, to call staff. And we do have planning staff that can translate into Spanish.
Okay. So hopefully that answers the questions. You have the paper there. Does it say it at the bottom?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Yes, supposedly.
Okay, that's fair enough.
I'm not familiar with these notices. I don't think I've ever, I know that they go out. I just have never seen one. But is it possible, if it's a sheet of paper, that on the reverse side we can print? Or I guess it's, or do we have the resources to have somebody translate into Spanish? I don't want to create an inconvenience, but we are in perhaps a predominantly Latino community that, I don't know, maybe a lot of Spanish speakers. I mean, I, this notice has gone out and the ship has sailed, but I am looking for like future notices, if that's at all possible.
And I understand that. We really don't have the staff, to be honest with you. And additionally, moving, you know, forward with that, we're also seeing an increase in our Asian population. So then you start getting into multiple pages and trying to find people to, you know, the city that can translate, and it, it's extremely laborious without the staff. We just don't have the staff.
Right. No, that's okay. I just was wondering. And I'm sure it's slightly difficult to translate like technical terms into a foreign language, so.
All right. So I believe it stands. Is there a motion to pass?
It's a motion to pass with the resolution condition that is being amended to it, right? Amy?
Yes, there's, what is the, Amy, the proposed amendment to the resolution?
That we want to be sure or receive evidence, something to the effect of that we want to receive evidence at the building plan check phase that number one, the generator is approved by AQMD, but it also has a...
EPF system.
Diesel particulate filter system on it?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's, the motion is to pass the resolution as amended?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Second.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is passed. All right, I believe that was the last one. Is there one more?
There's one more.
Did I miss?
One more. Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience, CP 857 is a request to place a wireless communications antenna atop an existing streetlight fixture. This is actually going to be located on an existing streetlight, which is within the public right-of-way adjacent to 4064 Sterling Way. The car wash is right there on the corner. The streetlight is obviously in the public right-of-way. And as you can see here, this is the existing streetlight building, car wash, street. So. The current approximately 30-foot tall concrete light pole is owned by the city. A new wireless communications facility is proposed to atop of it. This is unlike the one that you heard last time where they were actually replacing the pole. This one, they're not replacing the pole. They're just adding their wireless communications facility atop with a very small... facility atop with a very small mechanical box at about, oh, about twenty-three feet in height. The overall height of the pole to the very top of the antenna will be increased to about thirty-two and a half feet. There is mechanical equipment proposed, which will be down here, which will be subterranean within the public right of way area. And then there will also be some new signage that's going to be attached to the pole in this area here. Since the fixture and the associated mechanical equipment are within the public right of way and on a city-owned pole, the applicant is required to enter into a rights-of-way and pole attachment agreement with the city. The applicant is currently working with the public work staff and the city attorney's office in this, because the public work staff does these types of agreements for things in the public right of way. Staff is recommending that the planning commission open the public hearing and following the public hearing, adopt resolution PC eighteen dash zero one, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baltimore Park adopting the findings of fact and approving a conditional use permit for a wireless communications facility attached to an existing streetlight pole within the public right of way in the, in the C two zone pursuant to section one five three point one eight zero point zero four zero point B. Location, public right of way adjacent to forty sixty-four Sterling Way. The applicant is Ben Johnson, representing mobility, and the case number is CP eight fifty-seven. And this concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions by any of the commissioners? I, I have a question. Is this used for cell phones or for just any satellite signal?
The applicant is in the audience. I would let him answer that question. Come on down, Ben.
Hi, good evening, Chairperson and Commissioners, thanks for having me. My name is Ben Johnson, I'm the applicant, representing mobility on this broader mobility sprint wireless small cell project. The intent of small cells in comparison to a typical macro cell site is to sort of work in tandem whereby you have, the existing macro sites are effectively providing coverage. You have, on the other hand, exponential data demand driven in large part by smartphones. So smart cells speak to providing that additional capacity where that existing coverage can't speak to that. And it just covers a very small area, about two hundred square, square meters. And this is, you know, would be exclusively for sprint customers.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
This would be the second application for the same type of light fixture, right?
That's exactly right.
Another one was on River, River Grade?
Pardon?
Was the other one on River?
Commerce Drive.
Commerce Drive.
Where the other one was located, yes.
The, the only difference is that this one is just utilizing the existing city-owned pole versus the other one that was headed SCE light pole.
Okay, any more questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone wishing to speak? You got three minutes, please state your name and address. All right, I will declare public communications closed. And is there a motion to pass this resolution?
I'll motion it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Passed. Sorry, Mr. Tuttle, I know you're not used to my talking, I'm not as smooth as the city council people can talk.
We got one agenda item left.
We got one more agenda item?
Oh, the next item is reports of officers. I just wanted to, you know, bring your attention to the planning division monthly report, which we submitted to you for November. We're busy, all I have to say. The next item under council staff communications is a verbal update on the proposed Irwindales material recovery facility and transfer station. We are still going back and forth with Irwindales attorney. We are waiting, awaiting their response to our settlement offer. Which we have not received. So we're waiting. I do believe there is a settlement conference next week. David, do you, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So they are planning to move forward with their plans, huh?
They need to resolve the litigation first.
Okay.
Yes.
A scary, toxic waste of. All right, well, thank you. Is there any more communications?
That's all I have, sir.
All right. I would like to see if anyone has a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. See, I come, I, I come back from the hospital, all of a sudden we're having hour and a half long meetings again. I believe Mr. Tuttle is trying to get her agenda.
Okay, that's.